February fifteenth, February twenty-first, and March second, two thousand nineteen. We have a one-day liquor site license for Basketball Champions Center Court Club donors, and the reception is ten twenty-four eighteen. We have one-day liquor licenses for football games, McGurk Stadium, on ten-six, ten-twenty, ten-three, I'll be there on ten-twenty, and NBC Claire, we have NBC Claire Carlson. That's the consent agenda.
Appointment to the Municipal Building Committee.
Municipal Building Committee. I also had a request from Mike Surgenski's wife.
Adrian.
Adrian. She also wanted to have, be on the, she mentioned at a last Monday's meeting of the Building Committee meeting of being on the Municipal Building Committee, she is an industrial arts architect, so she also has experience too. So that had to be formally put in, didn't it?
Yes, she can just send an email.
Send an email, huh? Okay. So that's the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is Mr. Waskevich joining us this evening?
He said he was going to.
Okay, do you want to give him a little text?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, here he is.
Oh, here he is. Don't need to text him.
Ladies and gentlemen, always. How many of you are you?
Flying by the seat of his pants. Welcome.
All right, Delia.
Okay. We now have a public comments from seven to seven fifteen, or we're a bit late, but we have until seven fifteen. Is there anybody here that has anything for public comments?
How about those Red Sox?
Did they win today?
They're playing now.
Oh, they're playing now, okay. I knew they were playing tonight. Got to win tonight to win the, clinch the division.
Marlo, did you have something to hand up?
Yeah, I got something real quick.
Okay.
As you all know, this is my last select board meeting with the time I had with you. I just wanted to take a minute, I kind of passed on this when my resignation was read, but I figured I would save it for this meeting. I just wanted to say that there's, there's a lot of tools in the toolbox in the DPW now. There's many things that have been accomplished for the next DPW director to carry the, carry the ball, do some repairs on infrastructure, some upgrade, the whole GIS. We've got many things in place that weren't here when I got here. But it's not about me. It's about having support from the select board, all the committees, all the boards, and of course, the taxpayers of our town within the floor. And I just wanted to say thank you, that, that makes my job a lot easier. I want to say thank you to everyone for the support I have here.
I don't, I don't think we can say enough thank yous to everything that you've done for us over the last couple of years. We really appreciate how you took the bull by the horns and made the DPW what it is today. It was not a difficult path to follow, but I feel like you've had, certainly put great things in place, and I can just see a better future for us at the DPW, and I do appreciate everything that you've done. I've had some great conversations with you.
We've had a lot of conversations.
And, you know, we just wish you luck for your new endeavors, and, you know, enjoy your family, enjoy your scouting. You have so many other irons in the fire that, to me, family life is more important than your job, and if that's what it takes to make you happy, then that's what you do.
Well, my, my private contact information is being floated around, there's a lot of family here out there, so.
That's good.
I just wanted to say that.
Thank, thank you very much. You're welcome to here any time. Call us.
And good luck.
I know where you can find you on Wednesday nights.
With the new DPW director search as well.
Yes, we'll be here on.
Yep.
Thank you. And anybody here's, are you here for anything specific?
My name is Megan Campbell. Library trustees.
Library trustees, okay, thank you. Okay, I guess we can, well, we've still got a few minutes because the hearing is at seven fifteen. How would you like to go into the tree warden duties? Want to get that done, Mike?
Sure. As you all know, I'm the tree warden under the party, as we just talked about. At least in the interim, we're going to need somebody to be tree warden. Under Mass General Law, committees under ten thousand, you don't have to be a certified arborist or meet the other qualifications required licenses. Billy and I, Bill Kelly and I have been working on trees for the last year. He's done a good job out there of pointing things out to me, I go out and make the call on them, whatnot. But I think in, in the interim, as, as chairman and Billy are co-directors, I think it would be a good thing to have Billy be the interim tree warden. You're going to need somebody that will make the call in the storm, taking tree down, emergency situations mainly. As you know, we're here tonight for a tree hearing, I think we've done a pretty good job, I mean, there's a lot of trees out there that need to work, but I think we've got the dangerous ones we know about on the list tonight, so it'll give them a good starting point. And again, he can, somebody will have him in the field to make the call on emergency situation, and I would recommend Bill Kelly be appointed interim.
Do we need a motion, or are you just going to do that before you leave?
I can either deputize, or the board can appoint.
You're still in charge. Till next Tuesday.
Doesn't matter, we can take a vote now.
Yeah, I'll make a motion too if I can.
Okay.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Up, soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we can do a, let's go and move through this, we have, the Turka Park is off the agenda tonight, we don't have anything for them this evening. One-day liquor license fee discussion. We had a, for nonprofit, or for profit organizations, David felt that we were out of range on our fee that we charge.
Too high or too low?
Too high. So we set it at three hundred dollars by Mass General Law, for-profit organizations can get one-day liquor licenses for malt and wine only, not all alcoholic drinks. So we set it too high, and market conditions indicate that it should be in the hundred-dollar range rather than three hundred dollars. We've had a number of for-profit organizations come to us and inquire about one-day liquor licenses, and when they see the fee, and then they see the surrounding towns, they always go to the surrounding towns, so we're missing out on a revenue opportunity here, so.
So who are the for-profit organizations that typically approach us? What kind of organizations?
Banks have approached us a couple of times.
Had a couple, like Chamber of Commerce events.
Yeah, yeah.
They're nonprofit though. The Chamber is.
Oh, so even when, when a business does it, it's through the Chamber, so something like that?
But we have had a lot of restaurants calling. There was an art studio that was opening up, and they expressed lots of displeasure about how high it was, because they weren't interested in going for a full license. So there's been a multitude of businesses that, and nobody takes it, so.
Do you know of hand how many for-profit one-day liquor licenses we did last year?
Offhand? So to be clear, last year, we had, I don't know if you all remember Wyatt Canvas, and she was operating with one-day liquor licenses, so last year would not be a typical year. Last year, I think there was about seventeen of them, because she had opened a business and was trying to do business that way, and then she ended up taking a liquor license, one of our wine and malts, because it was too expensive to continue on. But before that, and I was only here for a part of the year, I would say maybe four or five.
Okay. Anybody want to entertain?
I'm going to make a motion that we reduce the one-day liquor license fee from three hundred dollars to one hundred dollars.
To a second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I lost one.
Do one fifty?
I would say a lower, like two hundred, and see how that affects the market demand for, what, do you have a list of the other towns around us? What if?
Northampton's sixty dollars, the Amherst is fifty, uh, a hundred dollars.
Uh, Northampton is sixty for nonprofits, and one of two for profits. Sorry, I just deleted out.
All right, thank you.
It's over here though, but yes, that's it.
Read the wrong list.
So one hundred seems to be the going rate.
Yeah, I would say keep it at one hundred if we get too many.
And then we can adjust to whatever going on surround us also.
Can we make a note, David, to revisit this?
Yearly?
Yearly, because we don't see a large increase in one-day liquor licenses, and everyone is wanting to back up.
Okay, so. All in favor of the one hundred dollar fee?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. One-day liquor license for Greenfield Savings Bank. How come that didn't go on the consent agenda?
They needed to have that discussion about the.
Oh, I see. Oh, all right, gotcha.
Can I take a quick administrative break?
Certainly.
Jennifer, can I, for some reason, I can't get an internet caption tonight. Do you mind just double-checking my sign? Yes. And if not, David's a friend, I can look him up.
Here's a, here's a copy of the agenda.
You're done? Okay. So, Greenfield Savings Bank has asked for a one-day liquor license on September twenty-six for light beer and wine refreshments from four to six P.M. at their opening this week.
Yep.
Your motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Says only light beer, though.
Light beer, I know, but it's okay.
You're out of that little calendar here.
I guess they're not, they're not brewed, are they?
We got invited to go there.
I do not see Kessel here yet. And we have seven fifteen, let's go up to that and get it done. Close enough. Tree hearing. And we have a tree hearing. Marlo, do you want to take over on that?
Sure, this, this particular hearing covers a total of sixteen trees, for the most part, a good majority of them are sugar maples, we have a couple of norways, a silver maple on the beach. Basically, one tree on Bay Road, four on Middle, and the remaining on West Street.
It's a lot of trees on West Street. Would they get the jackpot this year?
Um, well, a lot of these trees have been trimmed multiple times, and the last time they were trimmed, they took what they called the crown out of them, the center in the middle, everything else is down now. Or they're in a position where the crown needs to be cut out, and they're going to die. Some of these trees have been trimmed to the point where there's no more to trim. Some of them have one limb left on them that had actually a few leaves. They're split, a lot of them are showing insect decay and rot. There's four or five of them that sit up over sidewalks that are constantly losing limbs. So evaluated all these trees, and I deem that they certainly should come, come down.
Any of the trees between West Street and Middle Street are on the sidewalk where it's going to interrupt the sidewalk with the stumps being left there at all?
I think there's one real close to the sidewalk out of all these, you know, right up against it. Again, Bill Kelly, we put a stump list together, we did purchase a stump round a fur machine, so in that lull between fall and snow flies, we're going to be after, we're starting to grind down, down stumps. So that's something he'll be putting together, it's on his list.
Okay.
Is there anything we can do to be more proactive with those trees? Like, you know, I mean, I have some really big trees in my yard, and I've talked to a couple of tree people, because he said that with climate change and that kind of thing, if you believe in it or not, you know, there's a lot of trees like this dying. Is there anything we can do to try to save these guys? Because we don't know if they'll ever get trees this big again.
Probably old.
They're old, but I think also there's other factors that are contributing to them dying.
Since I've been here, I'll be honest with you, the sugar maples, this is the largest amount of sugar maples I've had to deal with. Predominantly, it's been Norway maples. Usually, every tree, listen, go to a tree hearing, has quite a few Norway maples on it. As we know, Norway maple was introduced to this country, and it wasn't the right tree to be introduced. So I think going forward, the, the shade tree committee could be a big help. They can help on tree planting. We can get grants. We have to meet three times a year, it's been kind of difficult the last year, we need to get everybody to get a quorum. But I think there's a few people on that committee that show interest of, you know, doing the meetings. We can get all our trees GIS if you want to go that far with it. And we can also get free grants for replacement trees. The nursery has kind of outgrown itself, they were planted real close together, and that's some of the trees that we're having to cut down, because when they actually pull them, they've actually grown together, and we don't make it when they're replanted, so.
Another question, hopefully, we can kind of rebuild the tree belt, at least on Middle Street and West, West Street, because there's a lot of holes in the tree belt, so it'd be great if we could get the shade tree committee to start working.
The other thing too is these trees are, you know, upwards of seventy, eighty, a hundred years old, and they, they were planted plenty far apart when they were planted. The other part of it is they're, they're intermingled, they're so big that they're, they're starting each other, so.
This shade tree committee, I didn't actually just person off of it, so is there a quorum?
There is a quorum, but I believe we're short two members.
How many members are on this tree?
Yes.
Like, exterior design, right?
Correct.
Yes.
And I, excuse me, I forget her name, machine out of the area too, so we do have three left, I believe.
Lori Martin.
Mr. Edwards.
And Mr. Edwards is on John Edwards.
But we could, we could use some help on, you know, that's pretty easy work to do, just have three meetings a year, and you can qualify for the whole Tree City USA, and there's grants available, or to put a tree planting, I mean, that's part of our goals and objectives this coming year, or would be, to get that more active and come up with a tree planting plan here in the town. So a little hint for the, for the next person.
Okay.
Motion to approve the list?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Before we move on, I have a question on a tree that's tagged.
Sure.
I live on Mount Warner, and you had mentioned one that's tagged on Mount Warner, the Winches property.
Oh, yes, is that the one with the playhouse or something in it, right against the road?
Right, I, I bought the Winches property, okay, to the east. But first of all, they couldn't make it here today. I'm Lee of Tetra, by the way.
Okay.
I live at one fifty-one Mount Warner. They couldn't make it, but should the committee decide to cut down the tree, or has it already been determined? Are you cutting down that tree that's been tagged?
It's not on this list.
But then what was on?
It's not on this list.
Well, it's, you want to, you want me to show you the?
Yes, I, I will tell you that I put it on the list, but, I mean, I put it on the list to be cut, and it didn't make it on this list.
So what does that mean, I'm here for nothing?
Are, are you wanting it, are you wanting it cut down?
Yeah, well, the part of it, I thought it was already.
Right.
Going, that's why you tagged it, and it was just a process of, you know.
It did not make this list.
So it's not, is that what you're telling me, it's back, it's, it's cut down? Because it's leaning more towards my living room than his?
I'm telling you, it didn't make the list, but that tree is in an emergency way that I am going to take that tree down. I was about to, brought that tree up. I inspected this tree, there's, there's a lot of insect, there's a lot of rot, it's all been cut on one side, it was a very large, wide tree, one of the Y's was taken off, and somebody finally made a nice playhouse on the one stump part of it, but it's a very large tree, and one of the, the other leader, the other half of the Y goes up, all right, lead, towards his house. And it's starting to show a split where the, where the Y is.
So do you need us to amend this with that tree? Or, or is it, you're just considering it an emergency, and you're taking it down?
If we could amend it, that would be better.
A motion to amend.
There are homes that aren't on the list?
Not that I'm aware of, I took four off on the tree cutting list, because I think we could trim them and not take it down yet.
Motion to amend, to include the tree on.
One fifty-one Mount Warner, one fifty-three.
Yeah, what, I don't know his number, but it also goes over my cable wires, and I would hate to meet and miss the Red Sox or the Patriots. Since you brought it up. Absolutely. But if I, if I can ask another question, because the Winches couldn't make it here, if you do cut down the tree, he's asked me, can he take the wood to save the town?
Yes.
Money?
That's his.
So if, is that possible? Can I raise, can you have the wood?
It goes to the homeowner first, and then you're better.
Great. My next question is, there's a maple tree thirty feet from that tree that's tagged, and I have pictures. It goes over, it's about to go over my front porch, it's very close to going, it's already over the road, but maybe ten feet from going over the power lines, okay? And part of that tree goes over, it crosses the other side of my cable. I have pictures to show you if you want to see the tree from the.
Is it tagged with notice, or is it, what kind of tags?
All right, there's the maple right next to it. So if, if you could trim a lot of those very long limbs that are about to obstruct not only the power line, but my house and my cable wire, I would like to have that considered.
Then that's a town tree?
That's a town tree.
It's over a par line, it's over a par.
Well, not, not over, it's very closed, and I have pictures if you want to see it. Okay, it's already crossed the center line.
Yeah, maybe on the trimming list, I don't have the trimming list with me. There's a couple on Mount Warner Road that are on the trimming list, and I don't have that list with me, so it's really well could already be on.
This is the picture going over, it's going over the center line, and it's not very, but it's, but it's very close to the power line, but it's also, you know.
All we need is a snow for Halloween, you're all set.
Okay.
Like it happened a couple of years ago.
Would that, would that be possible, if you're taking down that tree to trim the maple?
Yeah, I, I, it seems to me there's, there's one right near that tree on my trimming list that I don't have with me tonight.
Great, that's me.
Yeah, I'll probably take a look at it, yeah.
Thank you.
And, and John, to answer your question, EverSource has, has done the town wonders the last two years I've been aboard.
Oh, I, I, I think, especially, especially on Mount Warner.
They did a great job, but that's, that's further away than wires, so they would have never trimmed that anyway.
Yep.
I have a question. What qualifies as a town tree? We have an issue here on East Hadley Grove. There was a tree, I had called last year because it was so badly infested, it's fifteen feet in from the edge of the road, and it's in line with all the trees, and it was badly infested, and I says, you know, this is bad, and he said, no, that's private property, and they left. Well, this summer, we had one of those big storms, the wind blew it down, and I called and said, gee, and Mr. Kelly came up and said, that's private property, it's not ours. It's now across part of where Levin and Row is, it was in that corner of our lot, but I don't know whether that's classified as a town tree, or, because when we first moved into Hadley, I'd say about seventeen years ago, town came, there was a tree near our driveway, it came, cut it down, ground the stump, and planted a new tree, said, oh, these must be all town trees. Well, this is one of the other trees, and now it's private property, so how is that determined? Well, there's private property, or is it a town tree?
I guess you would have, I think you would have to know where your town, where your property line is. Usually, what is it from the roadway?
Near the bounds, I mean, and, and that's what we ran into, we've had to figure out, we've had to go through Dan on a lot of these streets, because the bounds aren't, the bounds aren't there anymore, the property tends. And every road I've come across records where twenty-five feet from center, fifteen feet from center, it varies on every road, there's no consistency here.
East Hadley is narrow.
And, and it's a narrow road, it may be a narrow easement for us. I, I do remember Billy, Billy talking to me about the tree, and he said it was behind the bounds, but I'll be more than happy to take it.
It's, it's, I've got a picture, it's, it fell over because it was so infested with the, with the carpenter hands.
Right.
And then they had those vines they grow on, well, in the summer, they, those vines had grown on, and sort of, you go, but it's green, it's not a tree. And, but it did go down, thankfully, it didn't go on into the road, but it went to the side, and I mean, it's, I don't know how you're going to, I don't even think you could take and grind it, because it's so rotten. I'll show you, I'll show you.
Well, that, that may be something that Marlo's replacement or the interim can work out, and both the boards may get a better broad definition.
Right, it's behind the.
We can present to the town and say, listen, I have a document.
Well, yeah, I mean, I do remember the tree, he's claimed.
Will we be notified when the tree that's tagged is being taken down, or will they just come randomly and take it down?
They just come randomly and take it down.
Well, do I have a guess on the tree in question being trimmed?
He said he would do that.
Oh, okay, all right, before I leave, I just wanted to be sure, and, okay, great. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Until Dave will be over for a bonfire tonight.
Mr. Tetra, tell him we'll be over for a bonfire with that wood.
Only if the fire department suddenly come by and tell us that we got to.
He's here tonight, you're all.
Okay, I mean, it's just, I didn't know what Paul thought it.
I'm your retirement.
No, I'm not retiring. Well, thank you.
Enjoy the family then.
All right, thank you. And more than likely, Bill will reach out to you and at least give you an idea when that tree's coming down, we normally do.
Well, it's, thank you. Good night, thank you.
Good night, thank you. Okay, is that it? That's it? Thank you. You want to go home, or you going to stay? All right, so we have a quick seven-thirty meeting with the select board, the Goodman and Library Trustees, do we have them here yet?
We have two of them.
Two? Are we waiting for one more? Julian's usually here.
I think we need one more for.
Four, you do, yeah. Do you?
I just checked it.
Okay. Do you want us to move forward then, until we, until your next person comes along? Would that be okay?
No.
Yeah, you're good.
You're going to, you're going to have to, you need to have a quorum.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's have Mr. Chief Spankenable.
You can be done in three minutes.
There's a good man, there's a good man for you. All right. All right, Chief, you're on.
Well, thank you, and again, it's all in writing for you, I, I did my self-evaluation, I actually was still utilizing the goals and objectives that I had in place from, I know we didn't formally put anything in, but I've had goals and objectives since I started in two thousand thirteen, so I was in work completely removed for, basically, those were my goals and objectives anyways, but. First off, just thank you to the board, Joyce, Molly, everybody. The FID team was an enormous year for the fire department, for public safety, and it's because of all of you, really, later.
Mark, you show.
Do you want to hold on?
Still just a couple of minutes, would you mind just?
No.
Okay. All right, so we will go right now, since we have a quorum for the Library Trustees, we have another pointee this evening. Is Megan here this evening, or we? Megan's here, great. So it's three.
Good, if you have a recommendation for the select board?
Yes, we have a recommendation for the select board to appoint Megan Campbell, who's sitting next to me, as the Library Trustee, replace the undesired term of Kat Perd, designed at Leenonards. I believe she would be the term of line till spring, and she will stay for election.
Sounds good.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Megan Campbell to the Goodman Memorial Library Trustees.
Thank you, you have quite a resume, Megan, thank you for applying, we appreciate our volunteers and people that come out, so thank you. We appreciate our volunteers and people that come out, so thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'd.
It could be a roll call vote.
Oh.
Yes. Phil.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Stanley.
Yes.
Trunlow.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Maureen.
Yes.
All right.
Sounds good.
There you have it.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the new member. Now you can vote.
Does she have to get sworn in?
She has to get sworn in by the.
Jessica, right?
Jessica.
Jessica.
Yes. All right. Now we may go back to Chief Spank and Abel.
You were saying.
Okay, so it's no secret, the biggest, the biggest outcome for FYD team is on June twenty-ninth, we just made it in under that window there, so we, we started up our full-time ambulance service under Action Ambulance and also we started the full-time staffing at its full level. Throughout the year, putting together job descriptions, posting the jobs, interviews for deputy chief, a lieutenant, and two firefighters was, it was quite challenging, but I think the outcome has been very successful. The ambulance side, we all know how hard we all worked. Joyce obviously takes the most numbers of ambulance staff committees, but since I started in two thousand and five, it's always been on the radar, even when Jimmy was the chief, to start reviewing and putting together a plan to implement a full-time fire department. The HRI report that came out in two thousand and twelve actually reflected all of that information and that was kind of our basis, our foundation, along with a study that I did as part of my chief fire officer program, where I evaluated communities of similar size and, and infrastructure and how they were operating, basically to get ideas of different, how they're handling their staffing. And we used that as the basis for our ambulance study committee, where we then went into interviewing fire chiefs, private ambulance services, and then ultimately making the recommendations to the select board to go for an RFP process and working with David, and thank you David for all that as well. That was, I'm definitely educated on putting together RFPs and contracts and it was a lot of work, but I think it really, it really gave me the ability to see all the inner workings of it, so just pulling one out of a hat and throwing it on the table, it's a big difference when you go line by line and you have folks, for example, David, your, some of your, I wrote this in here, some of your suggestions, you know, being in, you know, your job and having been in a private ambulance service and other folks. You kind of take all that information and you try to pull together, especially for me because it was such a nerve-wracking thing to actually think about moving away from a service that we've had for so long and what those challenges were to making the, you know, the town comfortable with us. We've had the same thing going for seventy-plus years, so to bring in an outside agency to take over your ambulance service has been working really, really well and trying to improve upon that. I felt it was really, really important that I, I had a really good understanding of all that and I, I do have that now. So thank you for, for all that. And on the flip side, the, on the dispatch side, thank you to Chief Mason and his team. The implementation, implementation plan and the transition plan were huge. So we have dispatch to think about, all these smaller colleagues that had to all be working and in place in a very, very short period of time when we decided to implement this, this contract. Working with State nine-one-one, with Amherst Dispatch to ensure that when we changed this up over, that somebody was answering the phone to get the ambulance to folks. And, and so in my opinion, I think that worked quite seamlessly and even today it's, it's been working very well. Also, you know, working with Mike and Mitch on S O Ps and their operating procedures and guidelines for the dispatchers, so there's a whole new way of dispatching now. Obviously, they're still just pushing a button to transfer to an emergency dispatch center where they provide the information to the patient on the phone, but our dispatchers are now required to be towing on for fire apparatus and for the ambulance service. So all that information was new to them. We had to really sit down and make sure that what we're asking them to do made sense and that they were educated on that and kind of comfortable doing it. And again, I think it went quite well with the amount of time we got. Again, the other milestone for us is full-time staffing. We now have full-time day staffing from six AM to six PM, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and I can't tell you how it made me feel to actually not have to wait for a fire truck to roll out of the bay, sorry, adding to a call, even on the first day when we had multiple incidents happen at the same time. And you have all, you've all gone through this, you've all seen this, you've seen what we've been struggling against. And not to say that we're, you know, we're, we're all set, everything's, you know, come by hot land and nothing else needs to be done. We have a long road ahead of us. We're only, you know, two and a half months into this, but I can tell you that the feeling of the crews that are working, myself, the ambulance, and we were just talking about it today with Action in the meeting that we had with their direct doctor that works for them, we've really, we've really kind of gelled as a unit now, where we're all working together and working together as a team and you can see what benefit that is in the service and out in the field. So we've already had one save in the first month with our firefighters and our EMS provider going out, providing CPR, early CPR area. Having talked with the, you know, the hospital and getting the input from them on how this is working, the same thing, they're not seeing any issues, they're very happy with the paramedics that are, that are on board and the EMTs. We have a very robust review committee that's going through everything monthly, so there's oversight like continuously on this. And I still wake up to every page at night and hearing the ambulance getting called out, wondering if somebody's actually signing on and go, and within seconds it's happened. Our average response time now to homes is four minutes and thirty-six seconds, as of last month. And you, you've had an opportunity to see some of the data and the number of calls that we're actually responding to. So the initial numbers of thought we had, you can double that.
So just so people watching at home, how does that improve from Amherst's average response time? Are we talking about minutes, we're talking ten minutes, what, what's kind of Amherst going to know that?
Depending, depending the location of town. The biggest issues were the Hawkins section, even though in this area you were normally seeing, depending if the ambulance was coming back from the hospital or what, but five to eight minutes, sometimes ten. Obviously, the calls down at, at Winfield and Med Express, we're looking at five minute response time. We're looking at about the same, maybe a little bit less for Amherst, but certainly not anything that is not still above and beyond for response to those locations. I think we're looking at pretty even to those locations.
But, you know, a few minutes here and there is huge for.
It's enormous. It's enormous. And again, like I said, this team approach where our firefighters are, they're all EMTs as well. So for example, you know, we had eight people, including the police department, so the police are part of this team approach as well. Cardiac arrest situation where we had to extricate a patient from his home and police, fire, and ambulance units were all working together to make that happen. Eight people were all sweating and breathing heavy by the end of the night, a lot of time you've got to be in. So this team approach is really working and that's what, you know, at the hospitals, American Heart Association, everybody's pushing this team approach. Everybody has a position and a clear, a clear job to do and it's really working well. The station's getting cleaned daily, the equipment, we've had next to no issues with, other than, you know, every once in a while there's a glitch where something goes down, but we haven't seen where, we're trying to start a truck and there's a dead battery because we didn't have the opportunity to fire it up for a week. That's happening consistently, it's on a consistent rotation. The station has been cleaned up. Excess property has been moved out of the door. Again, it's just continuous, so it's been, it's been really, really exciting. We're doing a four-on, four-off scheduling, so we're, we're not seeing much on the overtime side, first of all, because they're new employees, so they don't have the opportunity to use vacation time or anything at this point, but we're also not looking where we have, we're not, we don't have the minimum staffing right now. Obviously, I'm gonna be there if one of the firefighters calls out second, then we also have our deputies, so we're looking at three people that would, would be on. Most likely a minimum unless I was unavailable or the deputy, but we will always have those two people that come along with the truck. We're, we're starting, obviously, there's a, there's a training component, we're starting to move into inspections, that is on the whole, you'll see this coming up, but I really have no concerns that we're gonna be able to touch a few more places as far as annual inspections. The building inspector has also noted that it's been a little bit easier where if we're at a spec, in an inspection, we have the ability to allow the truck to roll out the door if it's a motor vehicle accident or a fire alarm, so we don't have to consistently leave the inspection and then try and reschedule it or come back, so that's not positive as So those are the biggest things and I, I hope you're, I hope you're all getting good feedback on it and I'm really, really proud of it. It's, it's been a long, long time coming and again, I know that we still have a, a long way to go, but we've created a foundation with some really good officers and firefighters, but it's really exciting. So thank you all of you for that. The other big thing that we have this past year, obviously there's a hundred small things that I could go over with you, everyday, everyday stuff, but the other milestone for us was, it was a regional grant that we received fifty thousand dollars, the state, it was a state public health security grant, and it started over a year ago with planning and reviewing our active shooter planning. And this past year, Mike Mason, myself, members of his officer, of his executive staff and mine, we worked with the Hampshire Regional Emergency Planning Group to actually go through a number of trainings from warm zone training, so our firefighters are trained, are trained on rescue task forces calls, we can go in and actually pull people out of a building in a, in an area that's been controlled in an active shooter situation. We've learned stop and leave training, which we're now putting out to schools and everywhere else. It's the hot topic and, you know, we all see how much it happens, unfortunately, it happens more often than not, but I can tell you that we, we had a very large full-scale exercises at the mall, where we had an opportunity to not only train with our simulation, simulation rounds for police signs, so they could actually train making, enter into an active shooter situation, but then they were also there working with fire units and EMS units to actually do that next step, where we're actually going into the space and, and pulling people out and, and putting turnips on stop and leave and trying to, you know, preserve life as quickly as we can. And folks were moved large out, we had girl scouts, we had members of Hopkins Academy, we had regular public, folks from the public that came out and acted as those, those actors for us, making it extremely lifelike. And I can tell you that your firefighters and, and police officers worked really, really hard on, it was as real as you can get, basically. We also have the opportunity, Mike and I, to actually establish command and practice our command structure. So Mike, you know, we don't have large departments, so if we have an incident, Mike would be part of that entry team that would be going in to stop the shooting. So we have a very good plan where as the fire chief, I would come in and handle that incident command structure for him, setting up his communications and kind of being the guy outside until he can step back and go come into that unified command role until, you know, when more resources come in. It actually worked out quite well and mass emergency management, all of our regional and state partners were there assisting us and I think it was a, a very successful event for us. And we did receive a base plan that we can now build upon and improve, we've already made a couple of improvements to it on responses, but that was another very large, large addition to our set plan, our community emergency response plan for us. So that was also a very successful thing. Another really positive thing for us, we worked consistently with Officer Romano, School Resource Officer, and, you know, this past year we actually implemented our own junior firefighter program. My son Gage and one of his friends named Higgins assisted me in putting together the standard operating procedures and basically what it takes and what the requirements are to become a junior member. I can tell you that as of last month, Liam Higgins turned eighteen, he is very interested in becoming a member of the fire service and he's moving into a call force probationary firefighter position. My son will be turning eighteen in February, so at that time, both of them will be entering the next Hampshire County Basic Six program where they'll have their basic training and then actually be able to start working on the fire ground, not interior attack, but obviously on the fire ground, assist us in responding to incidences. So they created that foundation for us and we're starting to get some interest from some other youngsters and we're actually still working with the schools and potentially trying to put some type of a classroom program together that we move into, into the schools. They also put together, they helped me put together the emergency to go bags that have now been installed in Hadley Elementary School in the Chinese immersion. Hopkins bags have been completed, they're gonna be installing those in the next week or so. Those are all, they, all the teachers have been trained on what's inside of them, what the purpose is for them, and they've actually been practicing that when we have a fire drill or a lock now that they're getting their emergency to go bags and they're ready and, and they're going out with them. Another big thing, we were asked to try and streamline expenses between departments. So over the past five years, I've been working on really trying to crack down and streamline our extinguisher program. That was very successful over the past few years where we now have a, a full understanding of what we have. Initially, we thought we had eighty extinguishers, we actually have over two hundred thirty extinguishers in Hadley, Hadley, and they are now on an inspection program so we can evaluate the cost in the video, the period, all the money, funding has been moved into my budget and it's actually increased that cost. We will see fluctuations up in some years when there's testing required, but we have a pretty good handle on what we have for those resources as well. And again, we're looking at any potential way that we can try and save costs by ordering together, for example, this coming year, you'll hear my, my goals and objectives a lot next year, but we're actually working with the schools, we are conducting monthly inspections of all the AEDs in the community, so we're actually making sure that the batteries and the pads are not expired and everything's hunky-dory and working well. So once a month, one of our crews will be going through the schools and the senior center so that we don't have any situations where we might have a deficiency on a regular performance. We're working very closely with the athletic department. We have, I've been volunteering time to try and save funding, having our EMTs that are on duty standing at some of the games, the home games, so that they don't have to hire trainers, and we provide that EMS for them. The ambulance has been parking over there, which the parents seem to really like, so they'll stop in and I think it's definitely good, we're really trying to partner with all of our other departments. This guy, he, he knows how much we've worked together and I wish he wasn't named because he was one of the three Ms. Still have to. Another M, but obviously the, the number of building maintenance things that we've been going through, he's been, it's been difficult trying to schedule them all and work through who's responsible for what. Ultimately, he's responsible for it and I think we've worked really well in getting that command structure down with the work order process and making sure that he was aware of what was going on so he could ensure that our budget was, was staying where it was supposed to be, so by the end of the year we would have the funding needed to finish out contracts and, you know, other items, so.
Very good communication.
So that's, that's in a nutshell. Sorry, it wasn't three minutes, but. On the goals and objectives side, basically for this coming year, obviously, the priority for, for myself is the daily operations of the fire department. I can't tell you what's gonna happen from one day to another and you can see that every day it's consistent, when you have something planned in your head and sixteen different calls come in or there's somebody walks in and needs some help immediately on a project or whatever, and we're, it's easier to get it done than to have to stop, stop them, have them come back and, and try and reschedule. So we really try to accommodate as much as we can. So the daily operations of the department is another one part of our, that's just ongoing. The dis, fire department and dispatch center standard operating procedures, that is my highest priority this year. So we have Lexible, it's a, it's a web-based service where we have all of our SOPs and SOBs online right now, but they have to be reviewed by myself and my deputy and we have to start signing off on them, customizing and making any changes that we need to, so that's my priority for this year. We really want to have the ability to hand out to all of our folks, not the old eliminated cards and, and stuff that we have in place right now, we want to actually utilize the system which provides training as well, so they'll be able to actually test out on specific standard operating procedures, weekly, monthly, however we want to set it up, so we know that they're actually understanding what they're reading and are capable of actually doing that. So we know that they're actually understanding what they're reading and are capable of actually doing that. So that's the biggest focus I have for this year.
Mike, can I just ask, it says date of implementation November first, but that says date of review April, completion May fifteenth to December nineteenth, so.
Yeah, I'm just gonna give you, I'll give you, it can take me up, it takes up to four to six months to go through all of the things. They told me just be prepared, it's gonna take you quite a bit of time to do it. Plus we have to implement our own. So there's the standard ones that you see that are reviewed annually by Lexiful that are basically more based upon NFA standard, state regulation, all that stuff. We still have to review and make sure that we understand them and pass them forward. But the other ones are just our internal policies and procedures that some of them actually have to enter in and actually create.
They'll be rolling some of those up as soon as possible.
They'll be rolling out consistently.
Now that you have staff, you know.
The, yeah, oh yeah, well, we have policies and procedures in place right now, it's just they're very hand-wrapping.
They're just updating, I mean, every year, they, you know, these type of things change, so they're doing updates at this point.
Well, we're actually, we're gonna be revamping our entire SOP process. So, but like I said, we do have, we do have policies in place right now. It's just they're not, it's not something that's conducive to the new department, so that's the priority.
Okay, so so you'd be able to like maybe even do it in batches though?
It's gonna be consistent.
We're not waiting till everything's done and then, okay.
It's ongoing.
But these aren't things that we review and put into place.
No.
No, this is his, yes.
No, this all came with nine one one, they're updating it on a regular basis.
Nine one one, I mean, basically on the dispatch side, it's more just for our dispatching police and fire, you know, police and fire. I might be out on fireside, but there are some pretty specific things that we need to have in place for the dispatchers to understand. So we have how they dispatch ambulance, we have how they're supposed to dispatch for a motor vehicle accident. But we're actually hoping that we might be able to go into a more of a run card, cell alarm, box alarm. So we're moving into that where it's a little bit more clear and a little bit more abbreviated how they're dispatching us. So that's that portion. Completion of projects, folks have been in my office, they've sealed the files. And the hope is with this new emergency reporting system we have.
Are you related to him?
I am. I could probably, I could give him a run for his money. Well, I was, I don't know if you remember John, but a lot of that paper has your name on it.
I know, I think I was on like the fifth violent count when I was there.
So we're filing through all that. However, our new emergency reporting system does allow for us to start scanning and doing inspections. So we're looking at our interns, some of our younger folks, maybe starting entering some of this. And I think a lot of the paper that you're, we're used to seeing, so the handwritten run reports, things like that, are gonna be going to the waste site that's gonna be in the emergency reports. Also, I'll be addressing myself back into the Hattaway Fire Substation project that's started up again. We received design documents this past week, so we're going through that to ensure that we're putting together a building that, you know, is, is prep for a potential future expansion if needed. Just making sure that we have all our ducks in a row. And the committee is very proactive and very, is working really hard on making sure that we're staying on track, staying on budget and that we're utilizing the space that you guys have provided us the best of him. And I think you'll like the product and I think the folks that live up there will as well.
Will you be staying close to the planning board throughout the process?
Yes, actually, we're.
He's gonna be sleeping on it. Not really.
We are having a public presentation on the twenty ninth Thursday, the twenty ninth, correct? At six P M at the Hattaway Public Safety Complex. So it's going to allow for folks to come and take a look at some of the initial designs, the location on the lot. And we'll give you all the information that we have up to date. So they're aware of exactly what's going on. It's the, it's the exact same layout of the building, just on a different lot. So the lot, the building that you saw on the Hattaway ball field is pretty much the same design that you're seeing being placed on.
Mike, the twenty ninth is Saturday.
What's that?
Twenty ninth.
It's a Thursday. Twenty seven?
Twenty seven.
Sorry, what's that, twenty seventh? October. Yes.
So that's the same night as the library spelling meet fundraiser, right?
Sure. We'll be right over after that. We're practicing our words.
I was hoping Mike Romano would get a team.
And again, the emergency reporting system that I told you about, we had originally been utilizing a different program, but they were a little bit slow getting the M for size, so the Mass Fire Inc. reporting system software that we have to report to the state. We were actually entering it manually into a very old computer and it was very, it would take hours to get our reports done. This, every time the company comes back from call, it's put right into the system and it's sent to the state via email, basically. So we've actually are now finally, another big day finally, complying with getting in reports to the state, which is huge for us. Another one, not so much of a stress, but I was asked a few years ago to review the MRI report and just to go through and actually check off and update the select board. So I'm putting that under my goals to go through that document and evaluate where we're at. And I think we've tackled quite a bit and I'm looking forward to making that presentation to you. And the last part is we're continuously updating our SEM plan, our community emergency response plan, our emergency management. And this year, our goal is working again with the public schools on reunification and actually moving students to an alternate evacuation site and then setting up a reunification site for them to be put back together with parents and family members. So we are, we are working on that as well. There's a hundred other things that we have on the plate and there's grand money we're looking for this year. The safe program, we are applying for the safe senior and student safe program again. So our firefighters will be going out educating students and seniors. We have a plan right now, we are working down at Winfield. We have one, we have a resident down there who's, who's working with us. We've reached out and we're working on making sure that the evacuation plans again are very well exercised and they understand exactly what they do if they burn their bacon or whatever. So we're following up with that and we're working with the ownership to make sure the building's maintained. And we're very busy, so thank you again and those are my goals and practices this year.
Do you have a quick question on inspections? How now, with, I mean, obviously we're getting the ambulance service up and running and everything, but are you able now to start getting caught up a little bit more on the fire inspections?
That's, that's what one of the goals is to, we're actually putting together a master list. So the inspections that are occurring already, obviously under Master of Law for liquor licenses, the quarterly inspections for the, you know, for example, Sunbridge, Goldink or all these other cases that we go through. Those are pretty much set in stone, there's a large number of them. We are now adding in as many as we can. The problem is we just started, you know, we're two months in. So educating the folks we brought on board, I'm working with them on that to make sure that if we're sending a crew out to do this, they're very familiar with what they're looking at. So for example, Brian and I, Fire Scouters and I are, he has been assigned tank truck permits. So tank truck permits are due this year, it's every other year they're due. So he's done, I can't even tell you how many tank truck permits. That's his assignment with his staff member. He's also gonna be responsible for gas stations. So gas stations are a three-year permanent process. So every year, we try to get into the gas stations to make sure that they're everything's safe. So he's gonna be responsible for that. Nick, on the other hand, is gonna be responsible for home inspections, for home sales. So there's the annual inspection, and we're all hoping we can get more in. But we're, we have probably twenty-five to thirty other required inspections just for oil burners, propane tanks and everything else. So yeah, you should be seeing an increase in inspections. Plan reviews, that's still, that's a very specific thing. Site plan review and then review of building, that's under my purview still right now. I'm understanding to be working towards getting more in depth into that with me. But at this point, I've had a lot of education on the building side, being in the trades and working with him. So those plan reviews right now, if it's not a simple residential project, I'm talking about, for example, the new hotels. It's some very specific stuff that requires some pretty in-depth knowledge and experience in reviewing the codes and making sure, working in the state fire marshal's office. So those are the things that I'll still be handling this one. I guess we should be seeing a good one.
Sounds good, thank you very much, very detailed this evening.
Thank you.
Good job. And plug.
The annual chicken barbecue is Friday, this week's Friday, at the Happy Young Guns Club. And Joyce will be speaking apparently.
How is that one?
Oh, you're not speaking?
No.
You are now.
I'll have to FaceTime you from Salisbury.
Yeah, so tickets can be picked up the day of the event, however, you can pick them up now at the fire station. You can go to the dispatch center and come down to the table, pick up if you'd like. And it's usually quite tasty and there is a band again this year, so you can come out and.
Six to ten?
Six to ten. The tickets are two for fifteen, seventeen dollars a piece, sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, two for thirty. Seventeen dollars each.
There you go. All right, thank you so much and thank you both, you guys, having us tonight. All right, so we can move to landscape partnership grant. Does anyone have some trust us here this evening?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Paul Gaggen, I work for Federal Land Trust. And here to request the town's participation, landscape partnership grant, which is a state EEOA grant. It's a grant that involves putting together a large-scale conservation project involving many acres. There are three important aspects to it. First is it's a partnership grant, so the state is expecting that the community is gonna come together in terms of governments, state agencies such as DCR, land trusts to partner to create this conservation project. The second aspect of it is that it is a five hundred acre minimum area that has to, that has to be backed. And so what that means is there has to be five hundred acres together or surrounding other conserved lands unbroken by road to meet the minimum qualification for this grant. Once you've got the five hundred acres, you can then cross roads and conserve additional lands with the grant. The grant is for a match for up to one point two five million dollars. And the third aspect of it is that it, I'm blank. What's the third aspect of it?
Well, you've covered the fact that it's a partnership. I'm grasping here, so it's municipal and nonprofit and governmental agency and it is a one-to-one match for dollars spent, the state will match you a dollar and for maximum of the one point two five. I think you should just keep going forward and when that third thing arises.
Sure, yeah. So it's right, you know, to put the five hundred acres together is, an unroated area is very difficult now because the land is very tractable in terms of roads and development and already conserved lands. Last time the grant came around, a lot of land was protected on the east side of the Holyoke Range. This time, we're hoping to protect land on the west side of the Holyoke Range and also areas connecting the range to other important conservation resources such as the Connecticut River and the Fork River. The town has about three hundred and twenty acres of land, watershed land, up on the range right now that we don't believe is protected under Article ninety-seven, so it's not permanently conserved. It would go a long way to making the match for that grant. That's the third aspect of the match part. So the match can be in terms of dollars in donations or contributions. Sometimes it's town CPA money, sometimes DCR kicks in some money, sometimes private, sometimes land trusts raise money. Other times, it's contributions of land, donated land, donated conservation restrictions on land. So we are hoping the town would consider granting a conservation restriction on those three hundred and twenty acres of land or some of that three hundred and twenty acres of land to help meet this match and meet the five hundred acre road this area. We have some other potential partners, Amherst College, Monhollyoke College, own land up on the range. And we've been discussing with them, they've responded positively, they're protecting their land. In addition to that three hundred and twenty acres on the range, it was brought to our attention that there are some parcels along the Connecticut River, that a couple of the town has taken for back taxes and some more parcels that the town intends to take for back taxes. Those parcels are pretty much undeveloped, they're in the flood plain. We think that those would be also a good match, it's about forty acres total if the town goes ahead and takes the remaining parcels that are, once taxes are over. So that land could also count as a match, even though it's across the road, it could also count as a match for the grant. That land, to sell it would probably be difficult because nobody's entirely sure where it is. And so part of the process would be to get it surveyed and identify it, identify its location. So I have some maps I can show you. The first map is of the tax parcels as far as we know, as far as, you know, we know where, we think they might be. Pass that around. The second map is of the parcels, the watershed parcels up on the range. These parcels were acquired by the town in nineteen fifty's and Janice, Janice Stone has looked into the disposition of those parcels in terms of, you know, were they conceivably protected under Article ninety-seven? She hasn't been able to find anything on that.
Certainly. So a few questions. This came up at our last meeting, we put it off so we could get you guys here and talk to you. But Kestrel land and DCR land tends to be posted, if not immediately after it's established several years down the road, that it's no hunting, no fishing. If you look at Moody Bridge Road and the Wildlife Refuge there, it's all posted, no hunting. We've had a lot of concern from people that heard that we might be giving conservation rights for town land, that the land may be posted, no fishing, no hunting. The town's, you know, a huge supporter of conservation land, but it seems that the conservation land is directed to certain areas of outdoor recreation and the hunters tend to be excluded, the snowmobilers tend to be excluded, the A T D riders tend to be excluded. And if we're giving away the rights to town-owned land, that can't happen and it's something that I support. And I would also like to know, what's the benefit of giving this conservation rights to Kestrel or to DCR versus the town just establishing our own conservation land and maintaining all the rights that, so we can decide in the future what to do with our own land?
Sure. So to answer the first question, the conservation restriction doesn't have to be structured to prohibit hunting and fishing. And there's a lot of Kestrel property and Kestrel conservation restrictions where hunting and fishing is allowed or not disallowed. So it's left up to the landlord, in this case, the town, to decide, you know, what kind of uses would be allowed out there. Snow, likewise for snowmobile. Typically, motorized vehicles are prohibited other than snowmobiles, so wheel motorized vehicles, except for handicapped accessible vehicles.
So we could preserve snowmobiling rights?
You could preserve snowmobiling, that's correct. I don't know about DCR lands, Janet could address.
Very similar, very similar. We have CRs that are, that allow hunting, that allow fishing. We have CRs that are, that allow hunting, that allow fishing, and again, snowmobiles, typically not ATVs. We have designated state forests throughout the whole state. There's, I think, four of them at this point that are open, specifically open to ATV, but as a rule, not ATV use. But the beauty of a CR is that the conservation restriction that is held by Kestrel or DCR restricts the owner from developing the property for houses or businesses, you know, commercial, any kind of building. But the landowner still owns the land, and, you know, hunting can be worked into the CR, fishing can be worked into the CR, so that's not an automatic no. There are areas that Skinner, because of the way Skinner came into state ownership, that hunting was prohibited, but that's only a very, it makes sense. It's the area around the Summit House, you know, that's not even great place to have a lot of firearms going out.
I can just tell you from last week, Trumacher Road, on private property, we had an issue with a DCR employee telling us that we were not allowed to hunt anywhere on state-owned lands or DCR property, even when we're on private lands, and tried to run us off until we were able to pull up the laws on mass fishing and sight and show enough of the case. So, and I as a hunter and others have run into that quite a bit with DCR lands. So I just find it hard to...
It's a tough, it's a weird boundary between Skinner and Holyoke Range. I mean, there is, I was asked to try and determine based on the deeds, you know, okay, what's open, what's not? And I was referring to it as the Mason Dixon lines, you know, so that is unfortunate, and I apologize for that. And available to... Could you answer his question, though? What would be the difference in us keeping our own land and giving it to you? Why, if we kept it in preserve or conservation?
Sure, sure. The main benefit is that by putting a conservation restriction on it and partnering with this, for this grant, we can conserve more land. It counts as the match for that grant. It also counts to make that five hundred acre area. Probably, it would be very difficult for us to come up with that five hundred acres without the three hundred and twenty acres that the town has. So in participating in this grant and putting a CR on that, you would be able to help the community conserve more land, some of it in Hadley. We're talking to at least three landowners in Shore Road, but we're conserving more there.
Because I'm not getting, I can't, the town would just put our own conservation restrictions on the land and...
You can't hold your own conservation restriction.
Or designated as...
You could.
Land that, you know, that's preserved by the town somehow, if you rather didn't give it up.
You could, but you wouldn't be able to participate in this grant if you were to...
What do we get from the grant?
You get from the grant the ability for more match funding to apply to conserve other land, so you get more conservation out of it. And you also ensure that the grant can actually take place. Like I said, well, for five hundred acres, the grant won't qualify for the grant.
So where does the money go from the grant, though? I guess I understand.
To Kestrel?
The grant goes to purchase land, purchase conservation restrictions on land. So, for instance, the three private landowners that we're talking to right now in the area, the money would go to get conservation restrictions on land, would get the land itself to be conserved.
So you would buy, you would buy the land from them?
Buy the land from them. Or buy conservation restriction on the land.
And strictly in the town of Hadley?
There are three parcels in Hadley. We're also, we're looking at land over the entire area, so we're also looking to partner with other towns, partner with the state, and protect land in the range in general. So there are parcels we're looking at in Hadley, there are parcels we're looking at in South Hadley, there are some parcels in Amherst. But most of it is going to be in Hadley, and honestly, probably about, at least the stuff we're looking at right now, about half of it is in Hadley, some of it is in South Hadley, and some is in Amherst.
Janice, you had it?
Yeah, I'll just say, I was involved in this landscape partnership grant the last time around, when I was working in South Hadley, and we had a number of parcels on the range that were put in, that were put into permanent conservation. And two of the things, first of all, a lot of the ones up on the range, there's no way that we have staff to monitor, maintain, or anything these properties. If they have a conservation restriction on them, the town still owns those range ones, but then Kestrel or someone who holds the conservation restriction then has a certain responsibility to at least monitor the sites. And I just know from town hall occasions, there are problems on any of these, you know, properties that are undeveloped in town, and it strains our resources, certainly conservation can't do anything, and there isn't that much staff in town to be able to handle things. So it's nice to have some other group helping to maintain that property. The other thing is that we had a number of parcels on the range that the documentation was really unclear, and the deeds are really poor, and it took, this grant paid for a lawyer to go through and straighten out the titles, and then create new deeds. And at least in South Hadley, I know the assessors were really helpful with that because there's some kind of mandate that you're supposed to have, sort of, you're supposed to be aware of exactly, you know, what land is owned in town and the proper deeds and everything. I don't know how exactly that goes, but it benefited them as well as it did us to get those deeds straightened out. So I just found that a really good help as well.
And I do share your concern about the, you know, the restriction to access and hunting and fishing. I can, I can, I'm glad to share with you, we have conservation restrictions on other lands where hunting and fishing is definitely written into the conservation restriction deed, and I can shade those deeds, but... I mean, I just look at the, what is it, the forty acres that we added to the Sylvia Conti Refuge. I don't know if any land that's part of that refuge.
That's federal, and that land is purchased with federal funds specifically targeted for a different conservation purpose.
Right, but what you're asking is for the town to sell forty acres...
Not to sell.
Forty acres below market value?
Oh, the tax title properties, excuse me. Yeah, I was thinking about your water department.
So in my mind, we're giving away a town resource at a discount, and then losing the rights to use that as for recreational purposes or for hunting and fishing in our own town.
Well, those riverfront properties are probably going to stay open to use, to fishing.
I mean, is there a way to assure that people can fish?
Absolutely. With public funds, it's open to the public, the fishing would definitely be allowed. I think the only restriction on hunting would be state laws regarding how close you are to a residence when you shoot the gun.
Yeah, but that's not how Moody Bridge Road is and all the other areas.
Right, and that's not DCR land, that's federal, that's a different landowner.
And you are restricted up on Holyoke Range.
At Skinner, yes.
The DCR is very heavy on the DC and very, very light on the recreation. None, as far as I'm concerned. There's hunt, I grew up on Amherst, and I was born on Trumacher Road. And we hunted, we dirt biked, we four-wheeled, and we still do up there on our property. And there's many other pieces of property that you don't own on that Holyoke Range. I've been to Pennsylvania for twenty-something years now, Maine. They have biking, horseback, dirt bikes, four-wheelers, everything on the same trails. And they're basically maintained by motorized vehicles. And everybody's ignoring these facts. Why is the state of Massachusetts doing that, and Kestrel Trust?
Well, the state, regarding motorized vehicles, wheel-motorized vehicles, the state often has a condition of these grants prohibited because of the impact of the wheeled vehicles. Most of these conservation restrictions allow for snowmobiles, they allow for hunting, they allow for fishing. Once again, this is not the federal land, this is not, this is not even state land, this would be yours, it would be the town land. And the town would, with Kestrel, craft the conditions of those conservation restrictions on the land. The town would be, would be participating in the drafting of those restrictions.
I think the confusion, Paul, is that in the public content that we're looking at, just under the forty acre, the tax title, the last sentence reads, comma, fee interest in these parcels for possible inclusion in the Connecticut River Greenway State Park or the Conti National Wildlife Refuge. I think the objection that you're hearing is that if there's a possibility of being included in federal, people are concerned about losing.
We can certainly, we can certainly not, not consider the federal ownership.
But that's just, is it possible to exclude any possibility of...
Yeah, absolutely, it's your land, it's your land, or some of it will be yours, you can take it, but, and we can certainly work with you to see that the ownership of it ends up where you want.
Yeah, I just, I need something in solid to review.
I am not for this. We are too restricted right now in this town for our community and for what we do with our own land.
Conservation land is fantastic if the residents can use that conservation land for outdoor recreation activities, but when they're prohibited...
All recreation.
Yeah, when they're prohibited from using their own town land, that's, that's not the...
But that's not what we're paying for, we're looking to see.
But that's what happens unfortunately.
Well, but that's up to you.
It depends on how it's drawn up to our, to our benefit.
So if we were...
It's a partnership. It's not, it's not somebody coming in and telling what to do, it's a partnership. You partner with us and DCR and to get the outcome that you want.
So if we were to, it sounds like what you're asking for is a letter of support. Is that right? So if we were to provide, provide the letter of support, and provide the letter of support, could we, it sounds like, then there, at the actual contracting process, we would have that opportunity to make sure that that language that protects our, you know, because I agree with these guys, I think a lot of folks want to make sure that we're not peeling away their access to public land, so...
Right, you have to disagree to whatever, you're agreeing to say, sure, we're interested in partnering with you on this grant. We want certain things out of the grant, we want certain recreational rights, which we support as well. And when we draft up a conservation restriction, or when you decide who the Connecticut River parcels go to, if you don't want to own it yourself, which is another possibility, that is the negotiation process. And if you don't like how the negotiation's going, you say no. At any point, you say no, and it stops. And that's how it works. So it's really up to you.
I have to see it in writing, you know, and I want somebody else to...
I'm saying no right now because I've seen the direction of the DCR, and you folks have gone in this town, and it's restricted the hell out of us.
I would make a motion to deny the letter of support at this time until we can have something more solid to review. What would you like? I would like a written, I guess, something solid to look at before we even consider granting the rights.
Who does the draft?
The drafting would be a collaboration between the town and whoever's holding the CR.
Maybe if we can come up with that, and then we can look at it as a board before we even agree to start, you know, supporting the project and that, that's something I could support if we have something solid.
Is there a timeframe on it?
Continue it rather than deny it?
So the timeframe on getting the general letter of support, and like I said, you can say no at any point, there's nothing in saying, sure, we're interested in maybe participating in this grant, doesn't mean that you have to go down the road with it, just means that you have an interest in doing so.
Oh, you have a deadline for...
It's not committing anything at this point, it's just saying, sure, we're interested in partnering, but like I said, at any point, you can back out of it, if it's not agreeable to you.
What's your deadline?
The deadline is October tenth, I believe.
Fifteen is the deadline for the grant.
Yeah, so we have to submit a proposal to the state on the eighteenth, identifying the partners and identifying the potential parcels of land.
The first time we saw this was a week ago, it's kind of a short turnaround.
They, you know, I just started the trust in, I'm from, I'm from New Hampshire, I just started the trust in June, and the trust has been understaffed, and I was just handed this and said, run with it and try to make it happen in the short timeframe. So that's why, that's why I'm bringing it to this late date, I apologize for that. I can send you, I can send you a draft conservation restriction of hunting and fishing and snowmobiling in it, to look at it, you can send it tomorrow.
We have another meeting on...
October third.
October third. We could bring this up. Could you send him a draft before, before then, so he can have a look at it?
I can, I can send him to have a public hearing on it as well.
Public hearing, too.
It's a call to public on this, because this is something that we should be getting away town, town land, or rights to the town land without a public...
So just to be clear, that by a letter of support saying that you may be interested in participating in this project, you're not giving away anything at this point?
I was gonna say, you can have a public hearing after you send that letter. My motion stands, I can't, I can't support you in a letter of support at this time until we have something more to look at. I mean, we're voting on favor or there's not, I don't think so.
No, I don't want to make a motion either unless I see what...
No, and I think a public hearing, you're gonna have handfuls of people in here that have been restricted, just like I said, because I've been hearing it already.
It's the flavor of the board.
So we can continue it, or...
Will I continue? Do a continuation and have a public hearing on this?
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion to deny the letter.
Okay, and then we will have a public hearing on this...
I'll second it.
Can we, do we have time for a public hearing? I mean, there's the posting requirements?
Terms of posting requirements, there's no, this is not governed by Mass General Law, so you can...
Okay, so we have time to go with it?
We have plenty, forty-eight hours, I guess.
Good, okay.
So part of the process of being able to apply for the grant means that we need to get kind of a simple ballpark appraisal on these various parcels, which could be included in it. We have to get the appraiser rolling on doing that. Would it be okay if we had an appraiser look at these parcels and just get a figure on what they might be worth in the meantime?
I don't have a problem with that.
It's gonna cost the town a lot of time.
It's not gonna cost you a ton, yeah.
I don't have a problem.
And just on the mechanics of this, if we were to do it, would we be putting any money upfront for this land, or are we just, basically, it's just a land swap, so to speak, or the land is somehow in this equity?
You would not be putting any money up, you would probably be getting some money out of the river parcels, and you would be seeing other land conserved in the town as a result.
And don't get me wrong, conservation is fantastic, and I think all of us are for conservation, it's just the restrictions that we have the issues with.
I am, I'm from New Hampshire, I'm in agreement with that, so...
Live free, live free.
And all, many of the conservation restrictions that we have in New Hampshire, almost all were allowed hunting and fishing and snowmobiling, and many of them are viewed more. So I'm with you on that.
Some of New Hampshire actually does have four-wheelers and bike trails up there also.
They do, they do, yeah, Jericho State.
See, this all came about when DCR took over the top of the mountain, and they thought they owned every parcel. And my family owned a parcel of land up there, and the bike trail, the riding trail went through it without our permission, whichever colored trail it is. But they're still going through it, some of the private property up there, and the bikes don't have permission. If somebody gets hurt up there, who's gonna be responsible for that?
Yeah, some of the, some of the bike groups are notorious for building bootleg trails, and that's something I know DCR is concerned about, and we're concerned about because of the...
I did too with the dirt bikes and the four-wheelers, but we maintained those trails for years and years and years, and we shared them with everyone.
Sure.
Cross-country skiers and all.
Understood, yeah.
I used to go from the center of town up to the top of the mountain myself. From Middle Street on.
Yeah, that's it, yeah. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thanks for coming in, I do appreciate it, and we'll take this under consideration and have...
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Great, where are we now? The jerk is not on the agenda tonight. It's, we've taken that off for tonight. Special.
Extra special today.
Extra special. Yep, let's do, let's, did you have anything specific for tonight? No?
We're just here because last week we weren't here.
Okay.
And there was sort of that generic line in the agenda, which is just the update, and then it turned into a big thing, and we weren't here, so we're here now. Just in case, we are.
Okay, jerk, do you have anything for tonight?
No.
No, okay. Well, well, so nothing from the senior, from the library. Senior Center, there was a meeting last night, and we're having a woo-ha meeting next Tuesday with the planning board and everybody, but I think the Senior Center is having a meeting from my messages I got today on Monday to reevaluate the size of the building. They are taking our direction and decreasing the size of the building, from what I understand.
Yeah, that's, the, the plan is, you know, based on the meeting last night, I think it was pretty clear that the path for trying to achieve two-for-one parking with the current Senior Center size is not gonna be able to pass through the planning board. So it's disappointing, but in order to keep the Senior Center on track, we're gonna meet on Monday to vote on reducing the size of the Senior Center to, you know, that ten thousand range square footage to meet the parking two-for-one on the site. It looks like it's gonna be about an eight-week conceptual redesign phase, so we would go back to the planning board to get site plan approval on, I think the date was November 20th.
So you'll, you'll still meet the date that they set last night?
That is the plan. That's why we set that date out farther so that it was an achievable goal, because with changing the size of the Senior Center, it's gonna change the parking lot, which is gonna change the drainage plan, you know, change the lighting plan, all these things will trickle down. So that gives time to do that. You know, really, the, you know, it's gonna cost a lot of money to do this redesign work. That money is coming out of the contingency, really, from the design. And so before, we had a construction contingency of about seven and a half percent, and now we're down to, you know, roughly a five percent construction contingency with this.
Based on what the projected cost of the redesign?
Based on this projected, you know, based on the projected cost of the redesign and the, you know, there's pluses and minuses. So you save some in construction, but you lose some because we have to redo construction documentation and all that kind of stuff. So it's there.
But we know with the wonderful world of graphics that's out there today, it's certainly not going back to the drawing board.
It's not completely going back to the drawing board, and we have some, you know, it's changing the layout of the space, you know, to, to accommodate the smaller footprints and all that kind of stuff.
So the main thing is, is that I think that the board wanted to see is that we could get the ten thousand three hundred and fifty square foot building on that with no problem with the amount of parking that needed to get done.
Yes.
And we can certainly work on the interior of the building, as long as we could get that footprint out to the planning board to show how it would be designed on the lot and at least have a preliminary that we might be able to give them ahead of time. And then the final drawings and whatever on November 20th. You know, I don't know if you could mention that to them other day.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I, yeah, I did already talk to them today, uh, talk to the OPM today about just wanting to get this in front of the planning board as soon as possible, wanting to not dive into detailed design before we have that approval. So, so that's kind of the plan right now.
It sounded like the planning board were more worried about the footprint than they were on anything on the inside of it. It seemed very weird.
They don't care about what's being built.
Yeah, they don't care.
They, they said that. They stayed that, two or three of them stayed that last night.
But there's, there's still, you know, some amount of conceptual work you have to do, or, I mean, it's like you wouldn't just put a, a foundation in the ground and then try to figure out where your bedrooms are later. I mean, you.
But you want a conceptual design, absolutely.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, you know, that's a given, what, what it's going to take and what the outside is gonna be and.
Yeah, like I said, the lighting plan changes, drainage.
I really hope, I really hope the architects and the OPM come up with an exact number to, because we're from eight hundred to four thousand square feet last night at that meeting still. There's not a true number.
But they, they did say last night though that at that ten thousand three hundred and fifty, it would meet the bylaw, the script letter of bylaw.
I mean, and let, if you, if we were that close to the twelve thousand square foot building, it's gonna have to work with the ten thousand square foot.
And I, I will say for people watching at home, for the first time, based on our straw poll, we've got maybe a chance of four-one, maybe five to zero. There's a surprise coming there.
I don't know what way that surprise comes.
Never know.
But, but we're close to an approval, so I think we're all coming together on it.
I'm hoping.
Yeah, so hopefully this is what pushes it forward and we can move on from here.
And again, I.
We shouldn't be digging right now.
Well, I'll, I'll reiterate what I say. I think that, you know, we still, our goal is to make the best building possible. That's what we want to do. The sub-fire station met on Monday ninth this week. We met with the OPM and Colliers, and we have started our project. We're looking at possibly a thirteen-month, twelve to thirteen-month to completion of the building from putting a shovel in the ground to two thousand nineteen of July to July of two thousand twenty. So we're hoping for completion at that point in two thousand twenty. Public forum will be on September twenty-seventh at six P M. And that's to be determined yet. I believe it's going to be at the Senior Cent, not the Senior, Public Safety Complex that night.
Yeah, that's.
So.
What time?
Six P M.
Six o'clock.
And that's just a presentation of what kind of building you're looking at building right?
Yes. Well, it's actually basically the same building that was in North Hadley that's gonna just get moved to the other end with a little bit of what their drainage and things like that on the outside. Still in the process of doing some surveying.
Just to say, will it show the situation on the site? Okay, 'cause that's what a lot of people were asking.
The plot, the plot of the building for further expansion on that piece of property.
Correct.
And so the question's on the.
We have, we have our wetlands and things like that. You have to consideration, but that's, that's in the back.
I was gonna say, is Haddon Media gonna be there, do you know, to record that there?
Yes, yes. So that's where we are with that.
Can we just go back to the library for a second? Just because we did have a building committee meeting on Monday night. So just by way of update, the, you wanna tell us what we looked at on Monday?
So we looked at the design, so we looked at three drawings on the screen.
Which is really cool.
It was very cool, just to make sure that we were happy with all the engineering that's being done. We're coming to the end of our design development phase, and then we'll be ready to go into construction documents. So after that, the next phase would be to be working on bid documents, but at that point, we would sort of be waiting to see what's happening with the, the joint site plan and the timing, to know whether or not we need to take a break before we go to the bid documents, or whether we just go right into the bid documents and are able to, to begin demolition. But that's what.
And that's one of the things I'm hoping, next week when we meet with the planning board, you know, again, if we're talking about kind of all of the ramifications or whatever you want to call it, you know, the paths forward here, that whole timing discussion, we should, again, it'd be better to have it sooner rather than later, so there aren't any surprises, so people understand what the possibilities are, as we know what's going with the Senior Center.
And I think there was some, talk about some use, and I think that'll come up next Tuesday, too. The building committee, that, you didn't make the last one, but I was there, talked about possibly using downstairs in the library temporary for Channel Five. It would be easier access to the downstairs than to use the upstairs. But again, that's something that we want to have discussion with you about.
Can you talk about what, what the timing of that would be? Do you mean after the library? Do you relocate some of the building?
No, before, when the demolition of.
The Hooker School.
If, if the others, Senior Center has not been built at that point, or full and full, just for a place for our Hadley TV to be temporarily.
But it's not ADA compliant.
It's not, and that we use, I mean, that's a space that's.
But they don't have to be ADA compliant.
Right, but it's a space that is in use by the library. I mean, we provide services in the basement. It's not just an empty basement.
What are you using it for?
I mean, collections, I mean, people use it for the young adult, young old.
The what?
The young adult section, young adult department of the library, and it's, it's, I mean, it's half of our.
Well, we'll, we'll have further discussion with you. I think they were just tossing it around, and I didn't want that to be a surprise to you if you.
Well, it's a little bit of a surprise.
Well, I mean, if something, it was just tossed around.
Okay.
So, I'm just putting it out there for right now for you to be aware of that either upstairs or downstairs, or, you know, even upstairs. So.
Do we know how much space it would be?
How big is that room you're in now?
Uh, about.
Two hundred?
No, five hundred square feet, probably.
That's a fair amount.
That's pretty big.
Yeah.
And they also have the server equipment and everything that needs to be housed somewhere.
But maybe the third floor?
Conceivably.
Conceivably. So.
I mean, the downstairs would be difficult because we have, I mean, we have the bulk of, not the bulk, but half of our collections are down there. It's, you know, the rest rooms are down there. It's, it's not like we can close off the basement from.
Okay, well, we'll, let's talk about it.
Sure.
What are, what are you utilizing the upstairs for?
It's mainly upstairs, and we can't, historical collections, we can't use it for meetings because of the building sector that has, you know, declared, we can't use it for public meetings. We can't really use it for, you know, much of anything. So right now.
There's a lot of space up there.
There is, there is.
Get all that stuff out from there and put it up in the Hooker School.
So now that the size of the Senior Center project is changing, is the library gonna get back some of the stuff that you guys were negotiating, like the garden space and some of the green spaces that are, I hope, I hope that we're talking with the senior committee about getting some of that stuff back now that there's more room to work with.
So we're definitely collectively, both projects are hoping to gain more green space around that. So I know that that is one of the goals, but we have not even begun to sort of try to redesign our joint parking until we see the program.
Yeah, some of the gardens and things like that.
Yeah, but even the, the most recent joint plan with the bigger building, we had picked up what, ten, ten feet on that last design, and I don't remember how much the original children's garden area was. Was it like fifteen feet? And then we were just getting ten back, so I would think, do you remember, like, the original?
I think we originally had about twenty, thirty.
Twenty feet.
So, yeah, it was a fairly sizable green space around our building, but anyway. So I imagine we're gonna collectively have a lot more green space. I know that was one of the objections, is too much asphalt. So yes, I'm, I'm certain that everybody will be a little happier with the, the joint parking plan, but we haven't started working on it.
Okay. All right, good. Project's good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You want to move on?
Right.
With everything that's going on.
So we're going to town meeting warrant. Last thing on the agenda.
So I think there's a couple of articles that we wanted to defer.
Well, I'd like to remove article number.
So seventeen?
Seventeen. For the time being, until possibly if we need to look at it. You had gotten a thing from Dr. Z. Did you get one?
Yeah.
I did have one.
Okay, so just on the planning issue of, of the process, I don't think we need to go into that, but we did receive that, and thank you, Dr. Z, for sharing that with us. And we'll follow that to the T, I guess. And so if someone would make a motion, any, does anybody agree with me?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, to rescind or strike Article seventeen from the line.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll second it.
Okay, further discussion?
Yeah, just some points of clarification. Just, you know, again, this is a public meeting and things get said, so there was, you know, even what Joseph Radley found going back to nineteen seventy-six, this does clearly say that the Board of Selecting do have a right to initiate. The zoning bylaw changed, so again, you know, we didn't want anybody to think that we weren't following protocol. And David, you did get it to them within that notice period. So David was very much trying to follow this outline. And then the other thing, too, is that there was some concern that it was done behind the scenes and just went back and, and, you know, we, we discussed it August first, August twenty-second, and then we had a, you know, several-minute discussion about it on September fifth. So, you know, I know everybody doesn't watch the board meetings, like all the board meetings. God knows why they do want to, but, and then there was also some conversation with Jim Maxim, Jim Maxim asking about it too. So I, I think it was just a situation where not all of the planning board members were aware of the fact that we were having discussions on it, because they, you aren't necessarily glued and watching our meetings, and I get that, but also just wanted to make sure that nobody in the, the public thinks that this was happening behind the scenes as a, any sort of trickery. It was quite above board.
Yeah, so what did you do that for?
Yeah. What did I do that for?
Well, and can I just say that this is a, I hope it's seen as a trivial gesture by the select board, and that we're trying to come to a compromise with the planning board and, and get things done together at this point. And so if the voters want to see this as springtime meeting or anytime meeting, then absolutely, we can work on putting it back on. But for now, I think one, one thing.
Yeah, and the right way to do it is really to, and that was the original discussion. So it's something typically the planning board themselves would put forward, you know, they're, they're the ones that raises, recognizing it.
And they have to have a public hearing also on it, too.
Right, so there was no way this was gonna happen anyway, which is what we talked about on the fifth, so.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is there another one that needed to come off or not?
Number eleven.
Number eleven.
That's for the land.
Land.
Right, so Alan, that's the Zaha Hadid project?
Is that the one?
Yeah.
Oh, because of CPA.
We have placeholder in there, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, so that we're not bringing forward for.
We could, but.
Go ahead.
Molly and I met with the Conservation Commission last week, and we met with the community preservation people for that. And, because the FSHI is that there's really two things that has to ha- have to happen that not happened yet before they would consider, you know, going forward, especially using town money or CPA money. And the two things are, they have to do some kind of a plan for how the property would be used, and who would take care of it, and how much would it cost, those kinds of things. And, and they have to get a firm price and maybe an appraisal or something done. So I think the.
That's why it's coming up right now.
Right, so it's, 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 it's not right. Hopefully we'll be in the spring if the property hasn't been sold privately, and we'll have a chance to do a little, do a little legwork and have some conversations and see how it goes. Also, what I should add, if the Kestrel thing comes to pass, that's another option. But we'll have, again, that's, that's not right either. It has, but we have to see how that goes. So, happy to everybody and kicking over, the best thing is to table it.
Al, you know, with the money that's involved with Kestrel and DCR, if we were to take that land on first lien refusal?
Well, there is.
There's no way for refusal.
There is not?
No.
No change of use.
Yeah, and that was a little bit of confusion that we didn't.
Because we could use that money from.
Yes, we could use that. We thought that would be terrific. Not bad. But yeah, on the right of refusal, if you was taking it out of sixty-one A, it's in sixty-one A now.
Oh.
If you were gonna develop it. But there's no intention to do that.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so there wouldn't be a change of use. So we won't, we won't have right of first refusal if he sells it.
So, so again, this, this proposal that they have really wouldn't, wouldn't help us in so many situations anyway.
You mean the Kestrel?
Yeah.
Well, it sounds, it sounds like they were talking about possibly using something from this grant.
Yeah, they could.
To make a purchase.
Right.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm not sure of the details, but it's a possibility.
Yeah, it was an offhand thought on the part of Kestrel. When they heard about it, they said, oh, well, wait a minute, that's really attractive parcel.
They, they definitely think it should be included, but it could, it could be included in the, this large grant thing, but that would, and the only, you know, purpose would be to buy it, because it's already restricted.
Like I said, I, I just, the recreation part, I really got a, really a problem with.
I hear you.
I, I was born on Trumora Road, and I've been on dirt bikes and four-wheelers.
Nobody's really, nobody's supposed to be told that they can't do something on their own property.
It's a reasonable position to take.
Yeah.
So can, can we ask Park and Rec maybe to kind of develop some sort of use plan for that property or some other department?
Yeah, well, you. Yeah, well, you-
You know, when you do that and you make it town owned property and you got it on the waterfront, then you've got liability.
Yeah.
That's a lot of objection.
There's some things that you have to really take a whole look at the picture.
It's like the rest of wars too with the public safety aspect though.
Exactly.
I mean, I guess our original thought was, get the property and then we'll figure out what to do with it. I think that hearing, you know, people's concerns are, I think we have to flip that and come up with, even though we don't own it.
Right.
Just, you know, we could come up with some kind of a plan, he's already involved, who's gonna take care of it, how, you know, what is the, you know, D P W S would be involved, Fox and Rec, Concom, Citizens of Byrders, you know, so we, I'd like to see-
Police, fire, what have you.
Yeah, I'd like to see some effort to, and I'd be happy to, you know, participate in it, to have some conversations about what do people think about whether we should own it at all, which to me is a no brainer, but if we did own it, what are the pros and cons, what are the costs? We could figure that out before town meeting in the spring if it's still alive, and-
Yeah, a couple of members of, of both the C P A and conservation, one of them even being in overlap between the two committees were, had visceral reaction to the town acquiring more land.
Right.
In a, in a negative way.
That we already have enough land, that we don't, that we're not managing, you know, I, I understand that, on the other hand, we're not talking about building a Taj Mahal to use over this, and, and we, and I know that when we started to talk to people about similar things like the half your boat ramp and the sun on the boat ramp, people say, oh, no problem, take care of this, it's, it's not a headache, it's no big deal, and I can see like friends who are mowing and picking up the trash and stuff and that, I don't, to me, it doesn't seem like, but the question's a valid question, it's a valid concern, I think it has to be-
I'm sure you're aware of, of the situation up at the Sunon Boar Ramp with the D C R.
Which, which one?
Uh, they're trying to tell the power boats not to go in there now.
I was just gonna say-
You see what I'm saying here, you see the recreation part is getting out of the D C R, you know, I see it all the time, it's not just a habit.
I don't, I don't see power boats going into the, into the same each property either.
No.
Kayaks.
Yeah.
Kayaks.
Kayaks.
They wanna do that non-motorized thing at Sunon Boar, so, you know, it's-
It's a whole issue for us, it's a conversation.
That's why the town owns.
Yeah. Okay, so we're gonna pull that, motion please.
Motion to remove article number eleven from the town meeting warrant.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
All right, so there was debate about article thirteen, snow and ice sidewalk bylaw, somebody had mentioned that we may wanna defer that.
Yeah, why?
I was one of the ones that mentioned that.
If you-
We can, I mean, we can put it out there and see what the voters wants to say about it, but if anyone-
I, I, I definitely think that we are overtaxing our D P W department with the new sidewalks that have just been put in down there by, expecting us to clear those on a twenty-four seven basis.
The only thing I wanted to see was, we talked about last meeting or meeting before that was differentiating between commercial and residential, because, you know, you manage your old people out there shoveling their snow versus, you know, hotel has them coming in doing it already.
Yeah.
So I don't know how you guys wanna approach it, but-
I mean, I know it's, you know, one of those things that have been, always been in the town of Hadley is that the D P W or the highway department is always taking care of the sidewalks in the center of town, Middle Street and West Street, but now we have developed this state highway out in front here that-
We didn't, the state didn't.
Well, they put this-
The state created this.
They put the sidewalks in there because they felt like they did, I mean, we didn't have sidewalks going down there by Mr. and Mrs. Baronowski's house in that area ever until after this highway was reconstructed, so.
Like I said, it's, I don't have a problem with the sidewalks down there, you know, even the bike lane, even though we've got a bike path in town, but-
Yeah.
The problem I have is the telephones poles in the middle of the sidewalks, the fire hydrants in the middle of the sidewalks. Go and take a ride down past the malls and see what the state did to the sidewalks.
I did. That's why I don't think we should be responsible for.
I said that right along.
Yes, well, what, what do you wanna do to-
Nobody would ever put a sidewalk in front of their house.
What's, what's that, is that a business district down there? Can we say excluding that district? Is that, I, I can't think of the map off the top of my-
No, you wanna exclude, you wanna exclude the residential for now.
You wanna exclude residential and-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, just identify a district.
Our by, our bylaw that's present is that people have to, supposed to be taking care of their own sidewalks.
And we ask, we ask most of the people to clear their fire hydrants when we get a lot of snow and most of the residents do and most of the commercial property does because they've got a service maintaining their property.
Yeah, I think Marla was gonna try to get us some-
David?
That's what he leaves on Tuesday, right?
So my sense is that we have a mosaic of uses of along Route nine and other streets. This would cover everywhere that has a sidewalk on a public way, and it may be that this is complicated enough that we need a little bit more time to study it, come up with a workable solution, so you don't have-
You're gonna go shovel those sidewalks to some winter?
I'd have to shovel my own sidewalk.
See, see?
You gotta find it.
So does in Northampton, yes.
And the fire hydrant in front of my house too.
See?
And the drain.
Yeah, I was hoping to get something done before this winter. Do you wanna just take off residential and keep business?
I guess it's in the right direction at least.
Can we do that?
Yeah, so let me play with the language and we can bring it back for a discussion on the third.
Okay, take off residential for now and we can look at that for the spring, but right now we'll wanna keep it for resi- business.
Commercial and industrial property should be maintained by the owner.
Yeah, we could just put the owner of any commercial or business real estate abutting, da, da, da.
We'll play with it.
Yeah, I'll play with it.
We'll have the next meeting.
At least we might save a little bit of time and money as one of the others.
I, I would hope so, yeah. Okay, is that it, folks?
Article number one, I completed the budget this afternoon, obviously we're not gonna get into it tonight, I hope that everybody has copy of it, I sent it electronically.
I'm just gonna pack this up, but that's okay, go ahead.
Obviously, we're gonna take it under advisement. I certainly can.
I do have it online, but I don't wanna write on it, I can't write on my phone.
All right, let's, let's get through this then. Go ahead.
Well, I'm not gonna go through the entire budget, I'm just gonna say that the budget is balanced, it's balanced by taking into account the, that we preserve our commitment to the service levels that we agreed to for the annual town meeting, so there's no cutting of programs or, or scaling back of services. We, final state aid was reduced by seventy thousand for chapter, for not chapter, for school choice assessment, which was an unwelcome hit to the town. It was offset partially by our new growth, which increased by forty thousand from our annual town meeting estimates, and may go a little bit more than that. It includes all the collective bargaining agreements and their costs, it provides for a two percent no step cola for the non-union employees. Education, remember that we said that we would provide them fifty-seven thousand dollars at the fall town meeting, they've reduced their ask to twenty-five thousand, so that number comes from that.
What did our free cash work out to be?
Free cash worked out to be four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars and change, which is a little lighter than I had hoped, but it works.
And you detailed all of that in an email this afternoon, if people didn't see it.
Yep. At the annual town meeting, in order to afford the ambulance service, we committed to using stabilization funds for half of the O P M annual contribution, and under this budget, I'm using one hundred percent of that contribution coming from stabilization fund, it's actually a better use of the money, I consulted with the treasurer before making that presentation to you. Local receipts remain at annual town meeting levels with slight adjustments valued to about thirteen thousand dollars, the meals tax and room occupancy tax, but that's our engine for generating next year's free cash, so I didn't wanna raise those. And obligatory expenses that became known after our annual town meeting was concluded, such as property insurance and workers' compensation, those have been accounted for, there's some increases in there, a lot of little details, shaving costs wherever I could, came up with a balanced budget.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Nice to have a balance, Russell.
Do we have any room for capital?
Yeah, very little room for capital, so that is gonna be one of the casualties-
Yes.
-of this budget is that the money that we had hoped to devote to capital is not there in abundance, but there are some monies for capital, we put capital after the annual. That's one strategy, and the capital planning committee will be meeting on Monday and coming up for the final recommendations.
Is there anything that, is there gonna be an emergency that, on the capital, that can't be deferred, or?
Don't have those notes off the top of my head, but-
Yeah, I mean, there's a bunch of stuff on there, I'm sure people will rely on, but I can't think of anything that's an emergency, other than maybe the D P W and the well filters or something along those lines, I don't know how much of an emergency that is, but-
But you're talking about that money.
Yeah, we could, we actually can pay for that out of water reserves.
Okay, that's out of water reserves, so that doesn't matter, okay, yeah.
I think we raised it last annual meeting.
Yeah, never mind, that's enterprise fund, yeah.
We have the right place.
So, yeah.
Okay.
So in general, for capital, there's a couple of options, we can borrow more than we had anticipated when we initially put together the annual town meeting budget, or we can defer to the annual, next annual town meeting, the capital budget and recertify free cash in February, because we know that we received a lot of payments after the July first deadline, so a lot of back taxes came in, a lot of pilot payments came in, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars of revenue that came in after the deadline of July first. The last monthly payment of state aid, for example, came in after July first, so we can't, there's additional money that may be available that we could, we could scoop up for the annual, but we'll talk about that on Monday.
Yeah, yeah, a little later.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, any news of the nation this week? Had enough news for the week?
Yep.
I think so.
I think so.
Submitted the I T grant for a hundred and twelve thousand dollars and change.
Say we didn't do your report, but that's okay.
But it's your guy and we can read it.
Yeah.
Is there any response from the voters office about the lawyer we sent to the voters?
Actually, we, we did get a response, that they're asking us to attend a meeting at the College of Holy Cross, and I'll get that information out to you.
Yeah.
This would be with all the other municipalities, this is not a private audience.
I figured that.
I figured that, but yeah.
Okay.
Sure, if I can make that, I'd like to go to that.
Okay.
Sounds good, and any announcements, no announcements, nothing tonight?
Again, Friday will be the fire association's chicken barbecue.
And then the library's having a spelling bee fundraiser at Metiera on Thursday the twenty-seventh, I think that's at six o'clock, but do you remember if it's six or something? I think it's at six, right?
Yeah.
And we'll have a sub fire station public forum on September twenty-seventh at the public safety complex, and that's at six P M, six thirty, if you would like to join us there to just see how those plans are going, it's open to the public. Thank you for your work this week, David, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.